Composting Academy teaches people like you and me to compost. It's all part of the L.A. Sanitation Department of Public Works Food Waste Challenge.
The food, when it goes to our landfill, it decomposes quickly and it creates a lot of greenhouse gases. And so environmentally, we really want to get food out of the landfill.
The Department of Public Works is focused on three ways to do that: through composting, food waste prevention, and food rescue; giving food to organizations that help the needy instead of throwing it away. Right now, a third of the food in our country ends up in the waste heap.
We have a crisis of hunger and food insecurity and food access all across the city. So there's no reason we should be throwing food away when people are actually going hungry.
These groups with their innovative ideas just might help make our world a little greener and less wasteful. From food recovery ideas, to food recycling programs in the schools, to a composting idea with a Japanese twist.
We have our own waste here. And as you collect it, you just add a little bit of this bokashi mixture. It helps in fermenting or breaking down of your food waste into good soil.
There are also plans to start hubs at community gardens and farmers' markets where people can drop off their compost. Atwood Farmers Market becomes the first one to do so, and the city wants to help you get started.
L.A. Sanitation has a compost bin program where we offer $25 compost bins for people that are interested. We want more people composting.
So before you dump those rotten strawberries, say no to greenhouse gases and start composting. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Three agencies also received grants for their part in planning the Food Waste Challenge. For more information on how to get started composting, call L.A. Sanitation at 800-773-2489. Well, thousands of L.A. Unified School kids spent a day at the beach, not to play, but to pick up garbage mostly left by adults. Gil Reyes shows us what they found.
Lots of bottle caps, and we found like papers and cigarette butts. And I'm just so sad that people throw trash on the beach.
But they do. That's why busloads of children are participating in this massive cleanup.
A sea of children here, about 4,500 kids taking part in Kids Ocean Day here at Dockweiler State Beach. Basically, the nonprofit Malibu Foundation hosted a series of assemblies at schools about the dangers of pollution in our waters. This is a culmination of all those lessons.
How one piece of trash, when it's dropped on the street and it rains, goes down to the beaches and oceans.
Michael Klublock from the Malibu Foundation has visited schools for 25 years to reveal inconvenient truths about pollution and the environment without preaching.
So I said, if you use a paper cup, you're part of cutting down a tree somewhere on the other side of the planet. You're not a bad person. You know, we all do it. But now you're aware, and now you can make a choice.
Straws are a big thing. I haven't been using straws lately.
Emmett Kleiger avoids straws because straws are made of plastic. Eight million metric tons of plastic wind up in our oceans each year, threatening marine life. Emmett entered a citywide children's poetry contest about ocean conservation and won.
Roses are red, oceans are blue. But that can't happen without the help of you. The ocean has trash, but that can be fixed. You really should be mindful of it. With all said and done, the fight to clean trash has just begun.
L.A. City Public Works invites you to join the cause.
Participate in community cleanups, participate in anything that has to do to keep the sidewalks and the street clean.
Because a lot of that waste ends up here. From Dockweiler State Beach, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Eight thousand kids took part in Ocean Day cleanup statewide. More than half of those children were at L.A.'s cleanup at Dockweiler. A big boost for the environment as L.A. voters approved Prop 68, giving a big thumbs up to a cleaner, greener future. Anna Marcos shows us what Prop 68 is all about.
Make some noise if you like clean water. Make some noise if you want to beat the drought. And make some noise if you like green spaces.
Angelenos, along with Californians all over the state, can now make all those green dreams come true after they passed Proposition 68 in the June primary elections. Both Mayor Eric Garcetti and environmentalists, also big supporters of the measure.
The benefits of parks cannot be overstated. We know that trees act as giant air filters.
Prop 68, the park's environment and water bond, would provide more than $4 billion to build more parks and more environmental and water projects, as well as help clean up our groundwater.
We want to make sure that through Prop 68, we can prepare for this drought that we are living in and the tougher times ahead by reusing, recycling, and making sure that we have the water we need.
There are thousands of Californians throughout this state who lack access to clean drinking water, and families in some disadvantaged communities unable to trust their taps.
I shouldn't have to choose between affordable housing and a safe street for my kids to play on, and green space for them to meet their friends and hang out, and clean water.
And Prop 68 could have another positive effect, creating more environmental jobs, such as those provided by the L.A. Conservation Corps for at-risk youth like David Soto.
Prop 68 would directly fuel the work of groups like ours...I read that part.
A win-win for the environment, local jobs, and our health and well-being. And Angelenos have said a resounding yes. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Governor Jerry Brown, as well as many other environmental and health groups, also supported the proposal. Well, we live in a city with a deep-rooted history, and there's no better place to get a feel for that history than by visiting one of the city's oldest buildings that'll take you back in time, not only with its architecture, but also with its grapevines that are more than a century old. Rasha Goel takes us there.
A walk through history and L.A.'s oldest standing house in the city. It's the 200th anniversary of the Avala Adobe, which is located in the paseo of historical Alvera Street, a part of Los Angeles Plaza Historic District. And did you know?
She's also one of our most visited museums. There's almost 400,000 people that come here every single year.
The Avala Adobe was built in 1818 by Francisco Avala. Throughout the years, the Avala home hasn't changed much from when it was originally built. The Avala Adobe is also famous for its 152-year-old vines.
These grapevines here, we discovered that they are actually the old Mission grapes. The Mission grapes are the grapes brought up by the Padres in the 1700s when they settled California.
California wine country was not up in Napa. It wasn't up in Northern California, the first California wine country. We're standing in the middle of it right now.
He also says the Mission Grape is actually a hybrid of two grapes that helps create good wine.
It's an opportunity for people to kind of get a little bit of history, but also indulge in a little bit of good food, good wine, and the opportunity to live the good life a little bit.
The event was a fundraiser for the El Pueblo Park Association, which helps preserve the precious landmarks of Los Angeles. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
There were attempts to demolish the property, but it was eventually deemed a historic site. So you think smelly garbage and old recycled gadgets can't draw a crowd? Well, think again. The L.A. Department of Sanitation's yearly open house drew about 1,000 people or more to some of its sites. Anna Marcos has more.
These guys are serious about getting the word out that Angelenos get free bulky item recycling. Well, not too serious. Sanitation is the name of the game here. The L.A. Department of Sanitation is holding this open house at each of its six sanitation yards throughout the city to teach residents about all the things it does for the public. And yes, smelly garbage and recycling are among them.
Well, that we learned that we can recycle more garbage and do less garbage instead of more garbage.
I love the fact that you take the old garbage truck cans that are damaged and recycle them into doormats and other items.
It's a super-family-friendly event and really seems to draw in the little kids with its big trucks.
He just wanted to come and do all the garbage trucks and honk the horns and move the bucket up and down.
My brother, his favorite thing, my brother's thing, he just loved the garbage truck. I don't know why.
Our son is absolutely mesmerized by garbage trucks, garbage trucks, trash trucks, anything that has to do with recycling.
It's Disneyland for kids out here. They get to demo the trucks. We have satellite trucks they ride in. We have free trees. We give away 100 trees. Kids get to plant plants, tomato plants, pepper plants, strawberry plants, take them home.
Yep, free plants, free trees, free mulch, and of course, free recycling and free bulky item pickup. That's on top of the usual garbage collection and water reclamation that any sanitation department does. Oh, and yeah, free hot dogs, too. Who would have thought garbage collection could be this much fun? I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
There are also plenty of games, activities, and prizes for both big and small kids. Boat tours through L.A. Harbor can cost you and the family $40 per ticket, but not on this day. Gil Reyes reports on why the port of L.A. was ferrying people at no cost from Wilmington and San Pedro.
All aboard. For one day out of the year, the Port of L.A. offers free boat tours through L.A.'s massive port complex, and not just for nature lovers. Wow, did you see that?
They get an exclusive view from the water of all of the operations going on here in our harbor. A lot of these people, you know, they're locals, or they've never even been to San Pedro or Wilmington. And they have all of this industry happening right in their backyard, but they don't know anything about it.
The one-hour excursions taking off from Wilmington and San Pedro coincided with World Trade Week, highlighting the benefits of global commerce. And what better way to recognize than at the ports of L.A. and Long Beach? Forty percent of our nation's imports pass through here.
A lot to take in.
Passenger Marcia Gamboa also got to see a different view of the USS Iowa, San Pedro's resident World War II-era battleship. There's the Vincent Thomas Bridge, the Los Angeles Lighthouse, cranes, cranes, and so many other familiar sights.
We're just seeing how they're reconstructing, like they're remaking the whole portico, you know? So it's kind of like new or different to see how what we're used to seeing is not there anymore.
It feels nice. The wind feels good.
Whoa, what's going on now?
Oh, they turn so fast.
I think we hit a wave.
Nothing but smooth sailing after that. From L.A. Harbor, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The company Harbor Breeze offers boat tours throughout the summer vacation season. You'll have to pay for these excursions, though. Find out more at ToSeeWhales.com. A new chief of police gets ready to take the reins at the LAPD. A couple of streets near elementary schools in Boyle Heights are about to get a lot safer, and recognizing the works of the city's Public Works Department. All these stories in City View. Incoming Chief of Police Michael Moore says he's looking forward to continue the work of building trust between the LAPD and the communities it serves by supporting and listening to community and police department members and working to reinvigorate the department to make it the best it could be. In addition to building trust among communities, his other top priorities include public safety and building a more diverse organization.
I am certain the safety of Los Angeles will be improved, the trust in our men and women will be improved, the confidence of our people will increase, and we will be that bright, shiny city up on the hill that every Angeleno so much wants us to be.
Councilmember Jose Huizar joined Breed Street and Sheridan Street Elementary students, parents, faculty, and other city officials to break ground on $5 million in safe routes to school improvements in Boyle Heights. From 2011 to 2015, there were 44 collision-related injuries, including two fatalities along Soto Street near the two schools. The planned improvements will create a network of neighborhood-friendly streets to improve the safety of people and students walking and bicycling in the neighborhood.
We're hoping to put out some bump outs, some more speed humps, some more street lights, those safety things that will help calm traffic and make pedestrians more visible and make it safer for our kids to get to school.
The City of Los Angeles Department of Public Works recently celebrated National Public Works Week, which recognizes and highlights the important work done by thousands of public works professionals. The theme this year was "The Power of Public Works." An exhibit was on display at City Hall that showcased the city's completed street repair projects from each council district. One L.A. resident said she has noticed the improvements to city streets.
I saw that there were some landscaped and greenery areas, making it safer for trees to grow, as well as improving accessibility and just the ability to walk.
An exhibit honoring Asian-American women in L.A. provided the backdrop as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month held its closing ceremonies. And there was a surprise musical artist as well. Anna Marcos takes us there.
The musical artist Milk got the party going at the closing ceremonies for Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. She was one of the women honored.
Then we have our very own Milk, one of our performers at this year's Identity L.A., who literally wrote the theme for the women's march.
This was a chance for lots of selfies with and without the honorees at this exhibit in the Bridge Gallery at City Hall. The exhibit honoring 14 Asian-American women from all walks of life: LAPD chopper pilots, artists, musicians, civil rights attorneys, activists, and more. All women serving as role models and fighting for the rights of people in their communities.
For the past month, they have literally and figuratively been the bridge, the bridge between cultures, perceptions, and our future.
The event aimed to help spread the message of diversity in our community, especially for a group that is rarely highlighted.
Ladies, it's because of you and what you've been able to do with your careers that little girls around our city are going to be able to grow up and see themselves in one of you.
The Asian Pacific Islander population is the fastest-growing ethnic population in the state and in the nation. We now have more API legislative representation in the state than ever before.
Well, you know, our community benefits from a rich cultural diversity. And so it's exciting that we celebrate the Asian diaspora in music, in food, in the arts. It's just a great way to celebrate and again, recognize that we are all one.
Wait, back up a minute. Yes, let's have a look at some of that food. Dim sum, anyone? Or a little milk is good, too. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Jump into summer by jumping into a canoe at the L.A. River. Make a splash at the Hanson Dam Swim Lake and Pool. And it's all about vegan vibes at this downtown L.A. event. All this in this week's Things to Do. This summer, enjoy plenty of water activities right here in the city. The Los Angeles River Recreation Zones in the Elysian Valley and the Sepulveda Basin are open for their sixth season. Activities such as kayaking, canoeing, fishing, and birdwatching will all be open to the public from sunrise to sunset through September 30. Visit LARiverrecreation.org to find out about river conditions, weather, and closure information. Pool activities have begun in Lakeview Terrace. From June 9 to September 3, the Swim Lake will be open from 11 a.m. to 6 p.m. seven days a week. Following Labor Day on September 3, the Swim Lake will be open only on the weekends through September 30. The Swim Lake features two water slides, a sand volleyball court, grass picnic areas, and cabana rentals. For more, call the Aquatic Center at 818-899-3779. It's the vegan playground, the festival uniting lovers of food, music, art, ideas, and good vibes. Experience the magic and energy of a community connecting with one another in a celebration of life and all things that make humanity beautiful. It all takes place Saturday, June 16, from 12 p.m. to 10 p.m. at Pershing Square in downtown L.A. And that's a look at some things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Clean water means playing in green parks. There's more to Garvanta Park than meets the eye. Beneath my feet are big systems that collect water from the storm drain when it rains. These clean and capture the storm water and use them for two things: water this park and recharge the groundwater. That way, we conserve potable water and keep our water sources alive. Oh, and we get a nice green park to enjoy, too.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm a Nyangar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Namaste.[1218.51]
If I could get everyone to, if I could get everyone to please take their seats. Today is Wednesday, June 13th. I want to welcome you to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 o'clock. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, Buscano, Sadio, Angler, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Krecorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
O'Farrell moves. Price seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonn moves, and Weezer seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, items 1 through 15 are items which public hearings have been held. A committee report for item 12 has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, why don't we take those items up? Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And, Mr. President, the ordinances for items 3 and 4 will go over one week unless reconsidered later with 12 members.
Okay, I believe we will get there, so we'll do that as soon as we get another member here. So, continue.
Items 16 through 20 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Do you have cards on these items?
Cards on all items, sir.
Then let us continue.
Mr. President, that brings us to items 21 and 22. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Why don't we hold them for now and just move forward?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay. I'm gonna have to get a... Mr. Price? I'm gonna give you, I don't want you to get excited, I'm gonna give you a temporary promotion. Very temporary.
I'll vote for that.
Oh, the magic switch. We recognize Council President Herb Wesson.
Thank you, thank you. Members, we have a very, very, very important presentation today. So I'm gonna ask my friends to all come up here. Tony, please, Tony McEwen, come up here. We're gonna recognize a man today that without pause deserves to be recognized. Come on, don't be shy. It's Wednesday, we don't bite on Wednesdays. It's Fridays the day that we bite. Come on up. You know what? Members, this is, like I jokingly said when they were coming up, that today we recognize a man that truly deserves to be recognized. And that's Tony McEwen. Let's give Tony a round of applause. And Tony, I want you to know that I told purposely, told my staff that I didn't want any talking points or notes because I wanted to just speak to you today from my heart because you are a very important person to me. And hopefully, when I finish with my rambling, you'll understand why. Members, I want to give a shout out to all of the executives that are behind me because what they have done is they have put together a team, a diverse team, that represents the United States of America. So when we turn on and watch the news, we get to see us. And at a time in this country when people are trying to separate us and when people are trying to divide us, I think that it's so important that we see a bunch of smart, articulate, good-looking people working together to deliver the news. So to all of the bigwigs, I thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause. And Tony comes here today not alone, he's with his, he's with his posse. And what I want all of you behind me to recognize is that to us in the city or in the region of Los Angeles, you are more than just celebrities to us or television personalities. You're like our family. We watch you guys sometimes two times a day, every day. I mean, I remember pregnancies. We've seen you guys grow, and we've seen you shrink back. Rick, how old are your daughters now? I mean, it's like we really know you. You're important to us. And whenever there's an event, when an organization is fortunate enough to get you guys to be the emcees, I mean, you guys are the best masters and mistresses of ceremonies that we can get. You help these organizations sell extra tickets. You are part of us. When we look at you, we are proud. We call you by your first names. I mean, it's like family. But I do think that it's important, members, that we remember that when Tony started, back in the olden days, no, when Tony started, there were not a lot of examples to watch on television being anchors or delivering the news. It wasn't a lot. There were some, and they inspired him, but it wasn't a lot. So when he decided at a young age that he was going to go into this profession, it was a courageous move. There was no guarantee that he would be successful. And here we are, approximately 40 years later, 25 years with us here in Los Angeles. And he, at the 6 o'clock hour, I think is one of the highest rated, if not the highest rated show. And that's because of Tony McEwen, and let's give him a round of applause. All week, the network has been celebrating his 25 years. And I think that if you've had an opportunity to see any of it, just about everybody behind me has said something very kind about Tony and that he's a professional and that he's just a good guy. In fact, I remember years ago hearing a motivational speaker say that there is absolutely nothing wrong in being good people. Tony is good people. Now, he also rides on giraffes. Camels, camels. With this, looking like a Latin with this huge turban. And he's got this love-hate relationship with roller coasters and I believe Six Flags this week named Tony's Twister or Twisted Tony or something like that. But what I want to say about Tony, because he's been in this business, young girls and young boys of all colors, any colors, now believe that if they can dream it, that it can come true. You know, I talked about the members, his colleagues saying these kind words about him. I'm gonna tell you a real quick story that Tony won't even remember. I first officially met him in 2003. It was the Democratic primary, or it was the presidential primary. And there was some big event at a college at the desert. At that time, I was supporting John Edwards. I was the Speaker of the California Assembly at that time, but a low-key guy. I hadn't found my groove yet. So I was low-key. So after the event, I look over and I see all of the media. And I look up, and there's Tony. And I have been a fan for years, so I ditched my security detail. I told them I was going to the bathroom, and I hooked around a tree, and I left them. And I go up to this guy who does not know me from Adam, and I'm like, hey, Tony, I'm one of your biggest fans. My name is Herb Wesson, how are you? He talked to me, and I know he was busy because he had to give reports, and I know you don't remember, we talked for like five minutes. I asked him all kinds of crazy questions. I asked him about Rick and his daughters. I asked him all kinds of things. Not once did he look at me like, boy, who is this little crazy man? Or, God, I gotta do something. He sat up, and he talked to me, looked me in my eyes, and when it was over, he shook my hand, and he said, it's a pleasure to meet you, Mr. Wesson. He is a nice guy. He is a real guy. You hear about being a pro's pro, and we've got a bunch of them behind us. But I don't care how good you are, how much experience you have, it takes more than just being a pro's pro. It takes a unique ability to connect with the people. That's what makes you successful in their business. And Tony, that's something that you are just a master at. He doesn't just go, oh, and I gotta tell you, when I met him, which was so cool to me, he had on a cool white shirt, nice tie, he had on navy blue suit jacket, and jeans and tennis shoes. And I was like, wow, they really dress like, this guy is cool. But I mean, that was something for me. But he connects. He volunteers in the community. There's a clip that I recently saw where he's at the mission, and to the people behind me, this council is really doing everything that it can to try to fight homelessness. Now, he's at the LA Mission, dishing out food, standing directly next to who? Mr. Krecorian. I mean, out of everybody, but still, so that's just the kind of guy that he is. And Tony, I just wanted you to know that my wife and I, this Monday, celebrated our 37th anniversary. We were out of town. I woke up and got on the road at 6 o'clock this morning so that I could come here and be with you today. And when I finish, I'm gonna go put my sunglasses and my shorts back on and drive back to spend the last night with my wife. Members, it is so important that we recognize individuals that go above and beyond the call of duty, that make the community feel proud. And I know that today, we were just gonna recognize Tony. But with your permission, members, why don't we just declare this day Tony McEwen Day? I think I have a unanimous vote for that. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to present to you our own Tony McEwen.
Mr. President, we do have, we do have one speaker on the queue. One speaker?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I want to rise and second the council president's motion to make this Tony McEwen Day. We very much appreciate your service to the city of Los Angeles, both as a newscaster that comes in our houses and has, you know, been coming in houses that I've been in most of my life, and a person who actually comes and has face-to-face contact with the community and gets involved in the tough issues. I can remember, I've lost count of the number of issues where we pick up the phone and call you directly and say, this is an issue, we need to shine some light on it, can you get a camera? And nine times out of 10, you've always done that and been able to do that. Even on days when there's been a big fire or a, you know, big news story somewhere else, you've been able to bring attention to parts of the community and issues sometimes that don't get a lot of attention. And so with you and Christine and the whole team, we really, really appreciate your gift to the city of Los Angeles, and we expect to stand side by side with you as you continue giving.
You know, Mr. Krecorian, I think we have a little bit of Armenia here with us today. I just thought you'd wanna know that. So anyway, ladies and gentlemen, let's hear from Tony.
Thank you, thank you very much, Councilman Wesson. I really appreciate it. I don't remember that. I don't remember that from 2003, but I'm glad that I made a decent impression. City council members, thank you so much, and I thank my colleagues and my bosses for being here today. I really appreciate their support. They have supported me throughout my time at KTTV, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate being able to serve the city of Los Angeles, both in the studio and out of the studio, a city that I never even thought that I would ever get to work in. I mean, I started my career in Sacramento. I tried for years to get to San Francisco because I thought that was probably the easiest place for me to try to get, and I ended up in a place I never thought I would be, and that was Los Angeles. And I have thoroughly enjoyed my time here. I love this city. The city has been very good to me, and I try when I can to give back to the city that has given so much to me. I really want to not only thank the city council, City Councilman Wesson, and my colleagues behind me here, I also want to give a special thank you to the viewers, because, you know, quite frankly, they've kept me employed. So I'm glad that they stuck by me. I hope they will continue to do so. I know you have a lot of business you need to take care of, so thank you so much. I really appreciate it, and thank you all.
Congratulations.
You gotta quit moving, man.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're supposed to follow instructions.
Right here, everybody? If you're comfortable? Thank you.
Let's go in the back for a few minutes. If you guys would please follow me.
All right, colleagues, let's go ahead and turn our attention back over to the agenda if we can. Mr. Clerk, where does that take us?
Mr. President, at this time, would council like to reconsider items 3 and 4? They're ordinances that were approved with 11 members. We now have 13 on the queue.
That's great. Yes, let's go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration on those two. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now we'll go ahead and actually vote on those items if we can open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items 21 and 22 are items scheduled for closed session.
But I don't care how good you are, how much experience you have. It takes more than just being a pro's pro. It takes a unique ability to connect with the people. That's what makes you successful in their business. And Tony, that's something that you are just a master at. He doesn't just go, oh, and I gotta tell you, when I met him, which was so cool to me, he had on a cool white shirt, nice tie. He had on navy blue suit jacket and jeans and tennis shoes. And I was like, wow, they really dress like, this guy is cool. But I mean, that was something for me. But he connects. He volunteers in the community. There's a clip that I recently saw where he's at the mission. And to the people behind me, this council is really doing everything that it can to try to fight homelessness. Now, he's at the LA Mission, dishing out food, standing directly next to who? Mr. Coretts. I mean, out of everybody, but still. So that's just the kind of guy that he is. And Tony, I just wanted you to know that my wife and I, this Monday, celebrated our 37th anniversary. We were out of town. I woke up and got on the road at 6:00 this morning, so that I could come here and be with you today. And when I finish, I'm gonna go put my sunglasses and my shorts back on and drive back to spend the last night with my wife. Members, it is so important that we recognize individuals that go above and beyond the call of duty, that make the community feel proud. And I know that today, we were just gonna recognize Tony. But with your permission, members, why don't we just declare this day Tony McEwen Day? I think I have a unanimous vote for that. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to present to you our own Tony McEwen.
Mr. President, we do have one speaker on the queue. One speaker?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I want to rise and second the Council President's motion to make this Tony McEwen Day. We very much appreciate your service to the city of Los Angeles, both as a newscaster that comes in our houses and has been coming in houses that I've been in most of my life, and a person who actually comes and has face-to-face contact with the community and gets involved in the tough issues. I can remember, I've lost count of the number of issues where we pick up the phone and call you directly and say, this is an issue, we need to shine some light on it. Can you get a camera? And nine times out of 10, you've always done that and been able to do that. Even on days when there's been a big fire or a big news story somewhere else, you've been able to bring attention to parts of the community and issues sometimes that don't get a lot of attention. And so with you and Christine and the whole team, we really, really appreciate your gift to the city of Los Angeles. And we expect to stand side by side with you as you continue giving.
You know, Mr. Krikorian, I think we have a little bit of Armenia here with us today. I just thought you'd wanna know that. So anyway, ladies and gentlemen, let's hear from Tony.
Thank you, thank you very much, Councilman Wesson. I really appreciate it. I don't remember that. I don't remember that from 2003, but I'm glad that I made a decent impression. City Council members, thank you so much. And I thank my colleagues and my bosses for being here today. I really appreciate their support. They have supported me throughout my time at KTTV, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate being able to serve the city of Los Angeles, both in the studio and out of the studio, a city that I never even thought that I would ever get to work in. I mean, I started my career in Sacramento. I tried for years to get to San Francisco because I thought that was probably the easiest place for me to try to get. And I ended up in a place I never thought I would be, and that was Los Angeles. And I have thoroughly enjoyed my time here. I love this city. The city has been very good to me. And I try, when I can, to give back to the city that has given so much to me. I really want to not only thank the City Councilman Wesson and my colleagues behind me here, I also want to give a special thank you to the viewers. Because, you know, quite frankly, they've kept me employed. So I'm glad that they stuck by me. I hope they will continue to do so. I know you have a lot of business you need to take care of. So thank you so much, I really appreciate it. And thank you all.
Congratulations.
I'm sorry.
All right, colleagues, let's go ahead and turn our attention back over to the agenda if we can. Mr. Clerk, where does that take us?
Mr. President, at this time, would Council like to reconsider items three and four? They're ordinances that were approved with 11 members. We now have 13 on the queue.
That's great. Yes, let's go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration on those two. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now we'll go ahead and actually vote on those items if we can open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items 21 and 22 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Go ahead and refer to Councilmember Krikorian. Mr. Krikorian, on the closed session items.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. President. Items 21 and 22 are both settlements that have been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. Those matters can both be dealt with in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, members, seeing no questions on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Did you wish to take them separately?
Yes, sir. If I may read the settlements, that would be great. Item 21, in the case entitled Gale Gluck versus Glazer Investment Brothers LLC et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $850,000 in settlement. And for item 22, in the case entitled Michael Rabinowitz et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $500,000.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and vote on those two items. We can open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, that takes Council back to items 16 through 20, which were held special for cards, or general public comment for items not on Council's agenda.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go into multiple speaker cards. Yeah, Herman, come on up. Armando, you are on items 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. And then general public comment.
What is a local emergency? Let's ask the mayor dated on December 5th of 2017. Due to the wildfires created by homeless people. But not only did it exceed the 7,000 acres of brush fire, or was it cush fire? You know how we burn cush in California? Set the hills on fire. That's how you burn cush. But this excess of 7,000, oh, let me read for the record. 6,500 acres burned because the city of Los Angeles failed to assist homeless people with housing. That's why it burned. Illegal camps burned, the motherfucker. Under LAAC Section 8.21 ET SEQ, under 42 USC 1983, fuck the white niggers. And then I go to item 17. Another local emergency regarding the mayor. Approximately 4,075 acres. But apparently, with all this confusion of people talking over me, how can the fuck can I think? So let me put it to you this way. On topic, fuck the resolvement of the local fucking emergency for the fucking exits and the fucking continues to persist within the fucking city. That is the Los Angeles, meaning LAAC Section 82.1, and the continuation of fucking mayor's declaration of a local emergency, which I find offensive when you blame homeless people and their homeless encampments. Then on item 19, no other than another white nigger, Mr. Harris Dawson and the bald fat fuck Jose Wezar, amending prior fucking council for May 25th, 2018, regarding how to fuck the bonds and fuck the affordable housing project under 6501 Crenshaw Boulevard. To this day, to this day, the two slumlords down there on this end, you heard their names, political white niggers who have stole from the public for affordable housing. And that's the reason why there is no affordable housing, 'cause Jose Wezar's a thief and Dawson sticks to him like shit on glue. Now my general public comment. Only because I'm a Jew white nigger, and I happened to attend the Public Safety this morning, I was removed by force by a fucking sergeant of arms, not to say his fucking name. Thank you, Mr. Duarte, for not fucking me up in the back with that belly club. However, the issue of deciding on a what appointment for Steve Sobroff, well, Steve Sobroff is a white nigger commissioner who works on the Board of Police. And that white nigger retaliates, discriminates, and uses excessive force like he did to Wayne Spindler and Michael Hunt, for the record. But as far as me, M&amp;M, our new chief of police, Michael Moore, said he's gonna stick his foot up my ass. It's not gonna happen. DOJ's gonna investigate your retaliation, your discrimination, and harassment, you white nigger motherfuckers.
Antonia Ramirez?
First, let me say thank you, Ethan, for opening up the door for me. You're a lovely young man. Thank you, Ethan. And ladies and gentlemen, number 16. First, first, we must, let us first applaud all the men and women, volunteers and the fire department, who had to combat these blazing infernal wildfires. And let us applaud all United States military veterans and tanker pilots, and all pilots who have assisted often at the last minute and called to dial's water and fire retardants, especially under grueling conditions and virtually poor to no visibility, and enduring the high temperatures and heat. And most of all, let us applaud those who heroically lost their lives in the wildfires. But ladies and gentlemen, this is an emergency. We are coming to the summer. This summer is going to be far more horrendously high heat than last year. We must be prepared to protect all the homes, the property, and the wildlife out there. So we must get ready, protect these areas that are more, that are high risk for fires, and get these pilots and our military veterans prepared for these wildfires. Let us not waste time. We must be prepared. There will be high heat, torrential heat. We need preparation for these pilots to be ready to go up at a minute's call. Please, God bless all our pilots, military veterans, and Department of Fire Department. Thank you. And number 18, neighborhood traffic safety improvements. God dang, if we can get these goddamn gangbangers to stop driving so recklessly and having those street races, street racing on the streets, we must stop these racing on the street and also these gangbangers. Again, ladies and gentlemen, we have reckless drivers. Most of these gangbangers and wetbacks are causing the reckless driving all over California and Los Angeles. So we're asking you to please put inspections or sections where they can go ahead and check all the violators who are driving without licenses, especially these young punk and goddamn young junkies. Please, put areas where we can go ahead and have the police search for IDs and make sure that they are not driving without licenses. And if they are recklessly driving, goddamn, stop them and put them in the can. Fry these goddamn gangbangers and the wetbacks asses. And number 19, council action. Ladies and gentlemen, affordable housing project. When will that come? To Crenshaw. Crenshaw was a bad area. Crenshaw, thank God, to Bernard Parks, he did a great job. He's improved the quality of life for the residents there. He made it more business-friendly, more commercial-friendly. He's done a good job. God bless you, Bernard Park, wherever you are. It's looking nicer. You're cleaning up the street from the junkies, the gangbangers, and all the pimps and the pedophiles. So keep doing the great job. But again, affordable housing goes to African-Americans and American, white Americans, and military veterans, and good legal law-abiding Mexican-Americans and Latinos, who came here by the rule of law. No wetbacks, no gangbangers. Deportation, deportation, deportation. Hasta la vista.
All right, your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Previn?
Want to call the items, sir, or just? Eric Previn from the 2nd District.
Eric, you're on.
Stop my time then.
You're on item 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
Thank you, I appreciate that. 16, obviously, we want a measure of gratitude for Monica Rodriguez, who did attend the Public Safety meeting this morning. Some did not make it, like you. It's the fire in Silmar, we're getting the federal stuff lined up. And obviously, item number 17, I don't see Coretts, but that would be the scurball fire. And obviously, that was a big disappointment because there was an erroneous attribution to an individual experiencing homelessness as the cause of that fire, which created a tremendous stress on the fire department and frankly, the Times. It was just a very, very disturbing chapter. As we hear all these fires that have been started by the utilities, we heard of a youth, it's just upsetting because we know that these fires are dangerous and that we should be protecting our communities, not scapegoating individuals. Item 18, obviously, brings up kind of a traumatic experience that we all went through in Mar Vista during the Vision Zero derailment. It's been reattached by Bonin after a lot of pain and anguish. But this was a group that couldn't get their neighborhood council re-elected because of Dunn's cooperation by extending by an entire year the term of neighborhood councils. Even though I got extended, I was really against it because I love the idea of voting people out of office who are nasty incumbents, who aren't serving the public. But unfortunately, we weren't able to get that. Number 19, sir, is the Tefra hearings. Now, Fubble loves Tefra hearings. You may ask, why does he like them so much? The reason why is because Tefra hearings are federal. And that means that they're paying attention. The reason why they have the hearings is so that people in the public will say, hey, that doesn't look... Because the feds are not paying that close attention, by their own admission. So these hearings are important, and they double-check to make sure we're having them appropriately. And we've asked some questions about that, and unfortunately, the answer is not great. But we're working on it, and we don't have a confirmation now. Now, item 20, Wezar certainly is a professional and a champion, I think. It may not be his group. But nonetheless, we're looking at the city development agreement with downtown LA, etc. We're gonna, it's my understanding we're giving them an enormous tax break, which is what we do. We're also lowering the time to deal with the hearing from 24 to 10 days. That means move it along quickly. Now, when it comes to transit occupancy taxes, I direct you to Studio City and the local neighborhood and where Sportsman's Lodge is. Now, what we're looking at now is a second bite of the giant freebie on the taxes apple for a guy named Richard Wynder. It was an REW LLC, Sportsman's Lodge. Thank you, Fubble, for keeping me on point. But the point I'm trying to make here is that the public needs to understand if we're cutting giant tax breaks for individuals, because it's not fair to the rest of us. So that's why I think we've come to a point where taxpayer confidentiality, which is important, needs to be measured against like property taxes, where we do disclose everybody's property taxes to avoid malfeasance. And again, thank you for...
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
No, public comment, sir.
You had your, that was...
No, that was not public.
Oh, you still have your one minute for general public comment.
I know. You thought you got out easy, but you didn't, sir. The public comment today is that you didn't show up at the Public Safety Committee meeting, but there was a Motorola item, and I think that's why you didn't show up. Because you have an inappropriate relationship with the lobbying firm that has been taking money from them. They've been failing to provide competitive bidding. And this was for a contract for the alarm systems. But you remember when you and Ted Ross, in one of the low points in city history, he was appropriately rewarded for it, agreed to a portable radio deal while making false representations about what the county was doing. And for the record, the county is now looking at some competitive aspects of their... I know Bloomingfield winces a little bit because he remembers going, hey, this is a terrible deal. Shouldn't we get the other technology? But we all agree with Motorola because they fight hard and they crush opposition, like you used to before you started posing as the Falcon and the Snowman guy and coming in late and missing meetings. It's off the rails, sir. You also offended all the local networks by not showing up and doing the street racing thing, which they had come down to cover expressly because you invited them to. So that's weird and not cool. So I would just simply say we have to do better and get the Exxon money back. Thank you, sir.
Jaclyn? Jaclyn, yeah, there you are. You have a minute for general public comment. Welcome.
This is about holographs. I don't know if preachers in churches know about holographs. People on the street tell me things all the time. Sometimes I listen, and most of these comments came from them. The people on the street have been saying that holographs are now going to kindergarten. Only one told me that. Someone also told me, one person, that holographs are going to UCLA. They know two holographs going to UCLA. I don't know if holographs are going to high school or trade school. Someone also told me, more than one, they were laughing and said, most of the people you see walking down the street are holographs. I don't know if that's true. Most of the people walking down the street are either black, Hispanic, Oriental Chinese, Korean, Japanese. I don't know if that's true. Some of the channels on TV may also have holographs. You don't know who on the newscast is a holograph, or who the other actors are. You don't know if they're holographs or not.
Okay, so we can now go ahead and vote on items 16 through 20? Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
13 ayes.
Next items, please.
Mr. President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, we'll go ahead and post and refer those items. Thank you very much, colleagues. Do we have any announcements? Seeing none, do we have any adjourning motions? We do? Okay. If we can get everybody to please rise? Could everybody please rise for adjourning motions? Councilmember Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn today in memory of a constituent of mine, an incredible world-known journalist, Murray Fromson, who lived in Pacific Palisades. Murray was a longtime CBS News correspondent and a former Associated Press reporter, known for his work covering the Korean War, the Vietnam War, the Civil Rights Movement, international summits. He died last weekend at age 88 at his home from Alzheimer's. He had a 35-year career in broadcast news, covering the war in Vietnam, the fall of Saigon. Before that, the armistice talks in Korea, the end of the US occupation in Japan, the Apollo space program, two presidential elections, three summit meetings between Richard Nixon and Leonid Brezhnev, and the bloody Sunday, Day of Racial Violence in Selma in 1965. He and his colleagues at CBS won two Overseas Press Club awards for reporting on the fall of Saigon. But the thing he was probably most proud of was being a founding member of the Reporters Committee for Freedom of the Press, which was a nonprofit organization that provides legal representation and resources to protect the rights of journalists. He formed that about 50 years ago and considered it to be one of his signature achievements. It provided all sorts of protection for journalists who were facing legal challenge or persecution in other countries. He also served, he took, after his career in journalism, he took a respite from journalism and came over to politics. And he was a deputy campaign manager in 1978 for Jerry Brown, when he was running for his second term as governor. He also joined the faculty of USC in 1982, and he later served as the director of the university's Annenberg School of Communication and Journalism. He was a judge for the Pulitzer Prize in Journalism in 2003 and 2004. He's survived by his daughter, Eliza Bental, his son Derek, and his wife, Doty Fromson, who was a friend, a community leader, a very active member of Pacific Palisades Democratic Club. He is going to be memorialized Friday at 10:00 a.m. at Mount Sinai in Holiday Hills. He was a wonderful and incredible man who really lived and witnessed decades of some of our most significant historical moments over the past 50 years. And he will be missed. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Booskayna?
Thank you, colleagues. I have two adjourning motions. One for George Adams, who passed away on June 5th. Born in 1921 in Pennsylvania. In 1939, George started a mechanical engineering apprenticeship at General Electric. His work and studies were interrupted by the onset of the World War II, when he enlisted in the Army in early 1942. He served in the 95th Infantry, traveling to Central Europe and returning home with two Purple Hearts. After the war, George went on to the lumber business, opening an electric sawmill. In 1950, he was called back into service, where he served as a Master Sergeant for the 101st Airborne Infantry Basic Training Division in Kentucky. After the completion of his service, George went on to Los Angeles to work. In 1973, he acquired a small auto wrecking business in Anaheim. And from those humbling beginnings, George founded the Orange County Steel Salvage, and the business grew from there. Today, the company operates as SA Recycling and is one of the largest scrap metal recycling companies... companies in the country with 75 locations, including the Port of Los Angeles. He leaves behind his wife Dolores of 63 years, their children George, Mike, Terry, and Wendy, and many grandchildren and great-grandchildren. May he rest in peace. And lastly, it was, is with sad news, and that we adjourn in memory of former LAPD captain Paul Enox. We just learned yesterday morning of his passing. He was appointed by the Police Department in 1975 and worked various assignments till he rose to the rank of captain. He retired in 2003. His last assignment was a commanding officer of Scientific Investigation Division. He's been a board member for many years for the Association of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the LA Police Association, and the LA Retired Police and Fire Association. He leaves behind his loving wife Cheryl, his daughter Shannon, uh, who's also with the LAPD today, Shannon's husband, and their two beautiful grandchildren. Funeral arrangements are pending. Our hearts go out to the LAPD family. Paul Enox, his wife, his kids, many of his colleagues and friends, may he rest in peace. Thank you.
We'll adjourn the, uh, the meeting in their memories of colleagues. We're gonna, oh, we have another one? I'm sorry, Mr. Ruth.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I'd like to also adjourn today's meeting in honor of Kuljit Kar Marwa, mother, grandmother, and wife of Dr. Amrit, Amrit Singh Marwa, a leader at the Vermont Hollywood Gurwara, Gurwara, and a community leader in the Los Angeles for decades. Ms. Kuljit Marwa was born July 19, 1929. She was four feet, 11 inches of strength, wisdom, humor, and love. After her father died when she was just eight years old, Kuljit helped raise her two younger siblings and became the compass and heartbeat of her family. She later moved to America and quickly made a home here in Los Angeles, raising her three daughters, volunteering at the Santa Monica Hospital for over 20 years, and becoming a beloved neighbor, friend, and community leader. She was well-known throughout the community for her warm kindness and delicious langurs, or lunches, and she would whip up for anyone and everyone in the neighborhood. She was one act, she was one person that everyone turned to for strength, acceptance, and a good laugh. Kuljit Kar Marwa, whose name means victory of the family and lioness, is survived by her husband, Dr. Marwa, three children, seven grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. It was Ms., I was at Ms. Marwa's funeral on Monday, and it was abundantly clear that this lioness spread love wherever she went, and she would be deeply missed by many, many people. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Seeing no other adjourning motions, I want to check in with the clerk. Are we good? Circulated? Okay. Then that concludes this council meeting. We are adjourned. Be safe.